Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Approval of the minutes?
I'll make the motion we approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second, we approve the minutes, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Meeting in minutes stand approved proclamation statements by council members and council announcements tonight. Seeing none agenda item comments by citizens?
No, sir.
And we have no unfinished business consent agenda clerk.
This approves items A through E on the consent agenda.
Offered adoption.
Second.
Moved in second voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Consent agenda, excuse me consent agenda adopted public hearings clerk.
This will direct the city attorney to prepare an approval ordinance for the development plan for 105 Rice Mine North.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second before we begin staff reports, I know we have a lot of individuals that are here tonight and also watching at home. I just wanted to briefly outline the public hearing process so everyone will know how this matter will flow. First urban development team will introduce the item, will review the plans with the city council and also outline the options that are before the city council. After that, the applicant will come forward in fifteen minutes to present their plan. Applicant may be provided additional time based on the number of questions that come from the city council during the presentation. Following that, we will then have the public hearing. So once you'll go to the next slide. So when the public hearing begins, everyone is welcome to address their city council. It's first come, first served to the podium itself. Individual can only come one time to speak to the city council. It will be five minutes per person until six P M., three minutes per person until six thirty P M. And then two minutes per person until everyone has addressed the city council. Although we do not expect to get to that point, just in case we wanted to have those rules in place. The public hearing at that point, once everyone has spoken will be closed. The council then may ask questions of staff, they may call the applicant or applicant's representatives back or even a member of the public back. At that point then, the council will make comments and then a vote will be called. So that being said, I would ask our urban development team, I think Ms. Kreitz and Mr. Pons are here. So if you would come forward and begin the process of introducing the riverfront development plans, Ms. Kreitz.
Yes, good evening council, you'll just be hearing from me very briefly and that's to explain that process. I know I took a minute during pre-council this evening to explain what we're doing tonight. And that is the public hearing portion of a riverfront development district application under our legacy zoning code. The folks that wrote the ordinance many moons ago knew that riverfront development district applications were very special. And wanted to make sure that there was a lengthy application and approval process for these. So tonight is the public hearing, there is not a public hearing in the future. You'll hear from Mr. Pons as the mayor mentioned, you'll hear from the applicants. The interested parties will be able to address you this evening. And then at the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, you'll have three options. You'll have an option to, you'll be directing the city attorney's office to prepare an ordinance of a general and permanent nature for the next regular council meeting, which is on June tenth, to either one, approve the development plan as proposed, two, vote it with conditions, vote it to approve with conditions, or three, to deny that application. If you're to deny it, you'll need to state your reasons for such denial. Then at the June tenth meeting, it will go under ordinances of a general nature and permanent operation. So if anyone's looking at an agenda tonight, that's section nine on your agendas. And that will be that final formal vote without a public hearing. So that's the process for Riverfront Development District and I'll turn it over to Mr. Pons.
All right, so as y'all know, this is the Sports Illustrated Resorts. When it came to you guys, initially it was R D O two twenty-four. Development one, two, three LLC is petitioning to construct a mixed use development on the property located at 105 Rice Mine Road North. And this is in council district three. Here's the location of the property, the aerial and the zoning. So just a brief history on where we've come from and where we've gotten to today. So can't really tell here, but the bolded items, I can't really tell if they're bolded, but y'all might be able to on your screens. The first two dates there were public hearings, so the Riverfront Advisory Committee and then the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was a community meeting at Indian Hills prior to going to council on the fifteenth of October, twenty twenty-four. And then that was tabled to where then it went to council again and withdrawn. And then since then, there have been two community meetings to get us here tonight. So to compare the initial submittal back in October twenty-four to today, just some brief kind of points here to make it clear what's going on. So the initial submittal was a nine story building, current submittal is six stories, which is a reduction of three stories. For the hotel keys and the condo units, they have reduced that down to seventy-five. So reduction of one hundred and twenty-eight of those units. They've added ten timeshare units compared to the initial submittal. So a total of one hundred and sixty-one units for this current proposal compared to two hundred and seventy-nine total units in the previous submittal. There was eighteen thousand square feet of retail previously, current is twelve thousand, so they reduced that six thousand square feet. And they have reduced the parking by a hundred and nine spaces. They did remove that eighteen thousand five hundred square foot central services building from the initial submittal. They've added six pickleball courts and they've updated their signage based off of what they've heard during those community meetings. So here's that initial concept, you can see that central services building on the left. Again, phase one was the only one that we were reviewing and phase one is the only one we're talking about today. The initial concept, the rendering here. And then here's the revised concept, so you can see they got rid of that central services building, they reduced the retail a little bit, added those pickleball courts, and then here's that revised concept rendering. And of course, we can always go back to these slides and look further. These are the materials that they've provided in their application. And then this is just kind of showing how those materials work together as a closer view than that previous rendering. And then this is that event lawn and restaurant retail area as well. Here is the updated signage that they've provided in their application. And so again, there have been four public hearings thus far on this project. And to just kind of summarize those, so September fifth, twenty twenty-four, the Riverfront Advisory Committee is just a committee that provides comment for the planning commission. They don't provide a recommendation. So these were kind of the four items that they really hit on emphasizing the tree canopy along Rice Mine, concerns with the timeshare and maintaining occupancy for the hotel in the off-peak, you know, times, emphasizing the importance of the Riverwalk and overall, they stated that they liked the development. On the sixteenth, when it went to planning and zoning commission, it was unanimously recommended for approval. And then on the fifteenth, as y'all know, it was tabled for one week. And then after that one week, it was withdrawn, which has brought us here tonight. And that's all I have for y'all. I know there's probably going to be a lot of answers to the questions that you have based off the petitioner's presentation, but I can answer any questions that y'all might have.
Zach, could you go back to one of the aerial maps?
Yes, sir.
The drawing of the block buildings there.
Like this?
Uh, back. Oh, oh, oh. What is the proposed Riverwalk easement? That, is that an easement for us to build?
Yes, sir. They are building a shared use path along Rice Mine Loop Road.
Any other questions of Mr. Pons or Ms. Kreitz? Okay, at this time, we will provide the petitioner fifteen minutes for a presentation to the city council. If you would, please give your name and address.
Good evening, mayor members of the council. Jason Walker, T T L twenty-eight ninety Rice Mine Road, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Representing travel and leisure, Jeff Richards is here, the chief operating officer of travel and leisure, but also a team of other folks as well. So as we get into any details, if there's detailed questions, then we've got the folks here that should be able to answer it if I can't answer it. So we prepared a presentation that hopefully addresses what we've heard today from community concerns. Maybe even trying to anticipate other concerns, but there may be others presented tonight, we're happy to speak to those too. There's probably a lot of information on the slides that I won't even cover in detail unless you'd like me to stop or if you want me to go back when we're done or if we need to refer to it as the public may have questions. So traffic, we know from the beginning, and again, this has been a productive process. Even from the owner's standpoint to get to the point we are, you'll see a number of ways, the final product. And Zach alluded to that, how it's been reshaped through the public comment process. But we know there's been concerns about traffic and anytime there's a large traffic generator on a site like this, that's understandable. In the big picture, it's interesting, and this is Alabama Department of Transportation information, from seventeen to twenty-three, traffic at that particular node on Rice Mine Road, kind of where the canopy is referred to, has decreased by about seven hundred cars a day. When you really start looking at traffic data across the city, maybe not McFarland, but there's a lot of minor arterials where that's the case. Maybe that's related to the door dashes and the delivery systems and the things that are, that are going on there, changing community. But traffic overall is down and we do not anticipate a detailed impact or a significant impact at a peak traffic, travel time. But as required by an L D P permit, if the city engineer requires it, we will conduct a traffic study.
Jason?
Yeah.
That traffic count is from where to where?
That's at a particular location and it's called A A D T, average annual daily traffic. And it's between basically the golf course and the property. And that's just, there's nodes all over the place where they collect data. And in seventeen and twenty-three, that's just the years they reported those three years. That's just an overall annual traffic divided by the number of days and then they come up with that number. So that's not a peak hour, that's a daily traffic number averaged over a year. So that doesn't relate to the intersection and the signal operations and some things too that that's going to have to be looked at because we're adding a leg, a fourth leg to that intersection. Phase two, again, that was alluded to, not part of the current request and would have to go back through the R D process. Project density, this, these statistics, I think have already been mentioned. And again, evidence that of what came out of the public process, you know, these meetings at Indian Hills Avenue Pub and then the community meetings. River visibility, that's been spoken to, I think the easement would be just that, an easement dedicated along the sewer line along the river where the shared use path could only, could not only go along the river, but could also tie to what will be a widened shared use path on McFarland Boulevard. So that's pretty exciting, connecting the southern Riverwalk to the northern Riverwalk and the developer constructing the portion along the Rice Mine Road loop. Project entry signage, this was a request by the neighbors, there was a pile on type sign. The developer went back with the architects and came up with this. They prefer it, hopefully it's better desired by the community and just another way that the project was improved through that process. The Sports Illustrated brand is apparently getting some criticism as well, but overall, and Jeff could speak to this in detail and it's amazing, but just the overall growing sports tourism opportunity. But there's an undeniable connection with the University of Alabama as well, which is why this is one of the first locations that they hope to do this. Not a local developer. We work with lots of people from everywhere on every kind of project and we're up here at different times. But this is impressive in terms of the connection they have to an extended membership across the country and probably the world. But eight hundred thousand members through their unique network that are connected to Tuscaloosa. Not to mention it's an outside investment of construction, really overall project of about a hundred and forty million dollars. Property management, they can speak to that in more detail, but on any given night, they average sixty-nine thousand stays at one of their properties. So obviously, there's probably some good and bad critiques of those and things, but they know how to do it. They've got a, I forget Jeff can quote it, what their success rate is in terms of customer reviews. But this also gets into a little bit of this quote timeshare process, which is really a points based program for overnight stays that average anywhere from two to four nights. This is not your grandma's timeshare program of a week at wherever it is and you're trying to buy out of it. You know, this is an ownership product, but it's through this point system for stays at different locations anywhere in the country. And again, I get it, community concerns and specific neighborhoods especially, you know, two in particular are within a mile of the project. Indian Hills is within a half mile from the entrance to entrance. I live in Riverchase, it's a mile from the project. You know, the heart of campus is a mile from the project. But a lot of those things and synergies are reasons why it's proposed to be located where it is. But as far as riverfront development zoning goes, this tract is located furthest from any single family residential of any other riverfront zone property. So if overall, your opinion would be, well, this is appropriate on the riverfront, it just doesn't need to be right here or whatever, then this, this is the most ideal place when it comes to location of a resort development on our riverfront. If you're concerned about neighborhood impacts. Along those lines too, it's trivial and it's just, you know, institutional knowledge. But in some way, either adjoining property owners or living next to a lot of these developments over the years, neighborhood associations that have had questions and concerns and really fears probably about all these developments. I lived in Academy Drive when Waterford was developed on the corner and, you know, it was, it was tense. So what's going to happen? Well, that's a great added benefit there, the, the office complex even that's been there for twenty something years. I was at the meeting when there was opposition and fear about that, what that would be on the river. So just again, I guess an example in this particular district too, of a lot of projects that were questioned that create the fabric of this overall community. Won't go into details on this, we can refer back to it. But I would think overall, if there's, there was concerns about overlap of the hotel, which was deleted from the project. But short term rentals, the status from the visitors bureau in three years has gone up two hundred and sixty-five percent. And it's not just you see those timelines, just in the September, October, November timeline, it's across the year. People are staying in short term rentals in our neighborhoods. This is an opportunity, depending on how the ownership reservations go in the product, to maybe draw people out of our neighborhoods, get them at a designated location to unload our neighborhoods. So potential positive impact. A lot of discussion about building finishes and beauty is definitely the beholder, whether it's architectural style, brick color. This does reflect the most recent changes in response to the neighborhood. But it was an interesting exercise because again, I would think probably the nicest looking building that's been built in years in Tuscaloosa is the Alamite Hotel. Both in scale and brick color and scheme, and this is not an architect, so it's a little crude. This is me taking an image directly from Google Earth and putting it on to this project at the scale. And that gives you an idea, again, this is not the Alamite and it's not attempting to copy it. But once we came back to these brick colors and this, this white limestone effect on the bottom, the lighter colored brick, it's similar probably to Alamite. Again, I'm assuming everybody wouldn't be happy with the color of the brick and the overall architecture, but they're bending over backwards, trying to find a way to, to do what they think is acceptable for their product that they're investing this money in and meet the public request. It's an absolutely important piece of property and that's been stressed. But when you step back, similar to what we did for the city twenty years ago on downtown redevelopment and you look at individual parcels and how underdeveloped the area is, it's economically blighted. You start to look at this in terms of just undeveloped property, at least it's maintaining some integrity of the trees and those things until it likely develops. But we've got a vacant Cypress Inn, we have those tennis courts on Riverbend Commons across the street that had vines growing up all over them and really just, and they're out of service, but they, they look better now, but they are what they are. The bank on the corner that's been vacant on the northeast corner of the overall Rice Mine McFarland intersection for, I don't know, ten, fifteen years at least. A partially demolished Buddy's Car Wash on the corner. The property across the street from this property that's along McFarland that still lacks development. An abandoned Texaco for, I don't know, ten years. When you really step back and look, we need something to kick this off. And we would think it's, it's, this project is a great indirect benefit of approving this project. So this is the last slide and this just summarizes some of the things I've said, but why we think it should be approved. An anchor tenant, it's an appropriate use when you look at the uses of riverfront development with no direct single family neighborhood impacts. Unanimous recommendations to this point, minimal traffic impact for a project of this size unlike multifamily or a Chick-fil-A or the different retail uses that really impact a peak hour traffic, this is minimal. And that would show in a finished traffic report. The site's been modified, the developers made a lot of concessions. There can be discussion of it, but they have a consultant that's worked through this in detail. And it was interesting to kind of poke my client on some questions on this. And these are conservative numbers over a twenty-five year period of about thirty-eight million in taxes of every variety, including seven million for schools. That didn't include the additional indirect impacts and tax benefits that would come around the site. They've got successful management of two hundred and twenty North American resorts. Jeff himself has been with the company twenty-nine years. This is not a fly-by-night operation. The Riverwalk connections, we won't even dwell on it because it almost sounds like a sales pitch, but is exciting to think what this can bring to local sports and youth partnerships as they become part of the community and have displays within the building of highlighting area athletes and et cetera. New and captive visitors, and then those last three, eleven hundred construction jobs, a hundred and twenty permanent direct jobs and no incentive request. It's pretty unprecedented probably, I guess, and I don't know how many years to have a project of this size and of this nature and to not be asking for any incentives. So all those tax dollars come to the community. So that's all I have. I haven't answered any questions. Again, Mr. Richards is here as well, we can come back up or?
Any questions of Mr. Walker about the city council?
Jason, one of the hundreds of emails I feel like I've gotten about this commented on that the plan would be to have online gambling and then a casino. Now, I don't know how you could do that legally in Tuscaloosa, Alabama anyway. And also they were concerned about the Sports Illustrated models walking around in string bikinis. Is, can you address this or would they address that or?
They can address it, but I'll just touch on it quickly because I've heard them have to address some of those questions. And I guess that's fine, if those are legitimate concerns, we need to address them. But, and it only makes sense from a marketing standpoint that you're trying to attract families. We've got the new baseball complex down the road. We've got this city investment of pickleball courts everywhere. We've got the University of Alabama. None of that makes sense from a business standpoint to have swimsuit models gaming on site. Casinos are not legal, so I don't know. I mean emphatically, that has been expressed that that's in no way part of their plan, their model, what they would do. But, and Jeff, I don't know if you want to speak to it further or not?
If you would, please give your name and address.
Jeff Richards, eight nine nine six Hubbard Place, Orlando, Florida. Councilmember failed. I've heard those rumors and I've been involved with Sports Illustrated Hospitality since its inception and I have not had one meeting about a casino. So there are no plans for any casino operations. I can't speak to the legality of it in the state of Alabama, but that is not accurate. Jason said it too, we've got two hundred and twenty resorts in North America. They are family resorts, that is what we build and that is what we manage. And our intention here in Tuscaloosa and other college campuses where we will be opening Sports Illustrated Resorts is to continue to have family resorts. So that is not at all a part of our business plan.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, Jeff, while you're, while you're up here. One of the concerns that, that not, not with, well, it's asking about your proposed resort. We've had some situations and one particularly in my district that was built and, and it was turned around and sold to, it's been sold maybe three, four, or five times, you know, and, and each, with each different owner, it gets worse. Can you tell me what your track record is? I heard you say something about this at the meeting that came with councillor Crowe in Indian Hills. Can you tell me about your leaving, maybe any fears that people have that once you build this, you're going to turn around and sell it to somebody else and move on?
Sure. So Jason mentioned it, it just happens to be, today is my twenty-ninth anniversary with the company. And we do have two hundred and twenty resorts in North America. In the twenty-nine years that I have worked for the company, we have not built, managed and sold a resort. There have been other resorts that we've acquired companies. And we looked at the resorts that they had in their portfolio and we said, these don't meet our quality standards and we have divested of those resorts. But in my twenty-nine years, it hasn't happened once. Additionally, we have eight hundred thousand members in our clubs that have access to these resorts. So we have a, we have a built-in ecosystem of demand. And these would be people that we'll be bringing to Tuscaloosa that in many likelihoods wouldn't be coming. So it's incremental opportunity for this community.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Jason, or Jeff? Talk a little bit about what the plan is for commercial development. I mean, I know there's, it was cut back, but I mean, what is, what is the thought process of what would be developed there right now?
I'm not sure I'm following the, the retail component?
The retail and commercial space.
Oh.
I mean, is there, what, what is your expectation?
Yeah, so, so the, when we made the decision to remove the hotel based on community feedback, we did take, let's call it six thousand square feet of retail out of the development. Our intention though, is a combination of F and B and retail in the twelve thousand square feet. When we look at a resort, we like to have places for our guests to stay on property and enjoy both shopping and dining. We also want places for the local community to come. So there will be some components within the building that provides, I'll call it limited F and B, but a more extensive F and B offering in the commercial space.
Any other questions?
Couple others, the, the tax revenue portion we were talking about, is that based just on property tax, Jason? Or is there a component of lodging tax or a, a short term rental? I mean, how, how is that number?
Yeah, Jeff may can speak to the details of it, but there, because it's, it's a detailed calculation that they've used to come up with it in a conservative business plan, you know, and talking to Jeff earlier and running through backs, through some numbers. But that is, that is property tax, lodging tax and some sales tax from the retail.
So it's not just property?
No.
Any other questions by the city council? Thank you very much, council may have questions following the closure of the public hearing. This is a public hearing, everyone is welcome to join the city council. When you come forward, please give your name and address. The clock will be either in the right or left hand corner to let you know how you're doing on the five minute time. So please come forward and give your name and address.
Thank you, excuse me, I'm Sally Reel, eight thirteen Overlook Road North. I have, I have the whole speech planned, but I want to make a couple of points. I think it's interesting that, that rather than the company representing themselves up here, they have Jason Walker of the engineering firm, the traffic engineering firm representing themselves. I don't know what that says, it's interesting to me. I'm the one that sent, I sent an email about the betting. And just so you know, it's S I sportsbook dot com. There are fifteen states that allow online betting. We have students from all fifteen of those states at the university. So while in the state of Alabama, you can't technically do that if you're a citizen of Alabama. You can for sure bet with S I and, and Sports Illustrated, it all falls. If, if you go to the Sports Illustrated website, there's a link for the swimsuit issue, there's a link for S I betting, there's a link for the S I resorts. So it is all tied together while they may not offer it on site. So I know y'all are sick of me, I'm, it's frustrating, I know y'all are done with this project. But this project is going to be here, as he just said, twenty-nine years that they've had buildings here. So this project will be here for fifty years. So I hope you will bear with us and continue to consider this project because it really means a lot to us because it's going to affect our property values and our daily lives. This resort takes that prime river real estate and doesn't offer anything for Tuscaloosans. It partners with a brand that objectifies women, I'm sure you've all seen the Livy Dunn video. It introduces a real estate product not currently in existence in Tuscaloosa, the timeshares, the vacation homes, which has a notorious reputation for buyers. And one thing I want to point out, I used to live in Pinehurst downtown. One time I rented out my house for five thousand dollars for Thursday through Sunday for a game day weekend before V R B O and all that stuff came into place. weekend before VRBO and all that stuff came into place. Those people that paid for $5,000 to stay in my house are not coming to stay at the SI resort. So they're not going to pull people out of the downtown neighborhoods to move to this location. The reason you're seeing me again is because I represent a huge number of Tuscaloosans who are either afraid to speak up because they don't like public speaking, or because they are afraid to speak up because of potential consequences to their personal lives, jobs, and businesses. My name has been brought up in a negative way in a Chamber of Counsel meeting, some of my friends, I mean, Chamber of Commerce meeting. A friend of mine who was in the meeting actually told me that my name was brought up. Another friend said, lied to me and said he wasn't there because he just didn't want to get in the middle of it. So, you know, it's tough for people to stand up here and oppose this. All District Three citizens want is a development on this property that will benefit us and will fit in attractively with the neighborhoods and roads that surround it. We are not a resort community. We are not Northport. We don't want another beach. We are a largely residential community. We live here, we work here, we go to school here. We want the Planning and Economic Development Department or the Urban Department, whatever we call it, to seek out appropriate developments that will fill in the gaps in Tuscaloosa, not to make out-of-town developers richer. I lived downtown in Pinehurst for 13 years. I moved from there to High Forest to get away from this. I loved it, but commercialism and students took over. I had a young family and had to move. Now you're threatening my home again with an out-of-place resort property. I really would like the City Council to consider a moratorium on construction in Tuscaloosa, put effective codes in place, not written by developers and contractors, and put into place a plan to control watershed and our infrastructure for all new development. You all know that we are woefully behind in the whole city of Tuscaloosa. Every single district has issues with that. It's been a longstanding problem in Tuscaloosa, and until you make the changes, we will never be the town we have the potential to be. We can do better than this. Whatever is built there will bring jobs. It will bring taxes. They're not the only ones that can do that. It will use local contractors, whatever is built there. Make this count. If you have any doubts about this resort, you must vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wish?
Everybody who is here to oppose it, will you please stand up or raise your hand if you're already standing? Again, a lot of people are out of town, so they couldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address their City Council tonight? If you would, give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Deborah Weiss, and I live at 1026 Meadow Lane North. First, I want to take exception to the idea that this part of town is economically blighted. I think when you cross over from McFarland intersection, okay, so there's a tennis court that isn't used, but that area is beautiful. If you drive through, you have this magic feeling like you're in a kind of another place with a beautiful tree canopy. So there is nothing blighted about this part of Tuscaloosa at all. So, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I'm opposed to the Sports Illustrated project. I attended Councilwoman Crowe's meeting in April in which the developers presented their redesigned project to the public, and now that meeting was packed, overflowing, which does indicate, I mean, people were out the doors, you know, in the hallways, and I think that does indicate the ongoing concern of people in a bunch of, a bunch of neighborhoods, not just High Forest, but I know the people in Rest In Place are really concerned because of the one-way-out, one-way-in problem they talked about last time. There's a lot of neighborhoods along, along the road that are concerned about this, and many of our neighbors who oppose this project are out of town at the moment. Okay, so as far as the benefits go for all the people of Tuscaloosa, I think that the risks of this project far outweigh the rewards. The rewards will all go to these guys, Travel and Leisure, and that's why they're proposing this project. They want to capitalize on the University of Alabama's name and successful football program. These are going to be, there will, of course, be rewards for people involved in building, as always, rewards for construction owners, contracting companies, smaller rewards for people who will do the labor of the building, but the rest of us, once it's done, for the citizens. We know that Tuscaloosa nearly doubles in size on game days, and so people coming to these new proposed timeshares would represent really just a drop in the bucket in terms of money spent in the community. I'm wondering, does anybody here really believe that any substantial number of people are going to come to Tuscaloosa, not for football games? Our hotels provide more than enough space for any of these other people who like to come at other times without the necessity to buy a timeshare or use their points so they can attend a track meet, a softball game, graduation, Parents Weekend, random sorority event. You know, there will be some jobs, but again, you know, not that, not a lot, and probably not jobs that are kind of career progression-type jobs, not like jobs at Mercedes or any kind of jobs that are really going to allow people to have some kind of movement ahead in their lives. So the risks, that's where the scales tip down. We're setting a precedent for structures that decrease the beauty of our riverfront, which is really, really beautiful. We risk the destruction, you guys heard me talk about this last time, of this currently healthy ecosystem and the undeveloped parcel, which I'm very concerned about. Now they're not talking about it. That doesn't mean they're not going to come to us at some point with Phase Two. Just because they're not talking about it now doesn't mean they're not going to be talking about it at some point in the future. So we risk damage to the watershed, the river, pollution from taxiing our strange sewage system. We know that Northport already has overflows. How are we going to handle the increased needs for the sewage? We risk flooding, traffic, people's lives in neighborhoods where emergency vehicles can't enter. I feel we very much risk the potential failure of the project and the unknowns that may fall out from this project, such as an empty building. This building was originally designed to produce a certain target revenue. I wonder if the company will be satisfied with a new target revenue? I don't know what that is. They haven't told us about it. Will they be satisfied with the reduction? At the meeting that Norman held, they assured us that there would be no rental to people under 25 years old. Of course, nobody wants student housing there. What will hold them to that commitment, that they're not going to do that? What will hold them to any of the commitments they're saying right now to try to get this passed? They can always sell to companies that haven't made any other commitments. So Tuscaloosa can do better. We can dedicate ourselves to environmentally sustainable developments that complement our beautiful waterfront, riverfront, developments that don't appear like great blocks of Soviet-style apartments on clear-cut land, and here I'm thinking of that monstrosity of student housing towering over the river on the southeast side of McFarland Bridge. Please don't let that happen again, and I would just like to thank you for listening to me this time around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address their City Council tonight? If you would, please give your name and address.
My name is Peggy Nasser, and I live at 5805 Edgefield Avenue in Tuscaloosa. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I come as a relative newcomer to the city. I moved here five years ago with my family, and I've fallen in love with Tuscaloosa and its people and its community. It's a special place, and a lot of that credit goes to you. And before I proceed, I want to acknowledge and make sure you understand that I appreciate what you have done in terms of development for the city. I think the Riverwalk is amazing, Government Plaza, and the concerts at night are great, and the farmer's market is beautiful. But I think there's still a lot of work to be done, and it's kind of the big elephant in the city, not Big Al, but the big elephant. Tuscaloosa is not a particularly attractive town. The campus is beautiful, but in the town, there are just too many abandoned buildings, unoccupied businesses. And when I came here just to visit, that was the first thing I noticed about this city. And what I'm afraid of is that this development, occupancy rates are going down, and either this development is not going to be successful, or it's going to drive other hotels into bankruptcy or disrepair. Every time I bring this up, though, about looking at the surrounding area and trying to step back and look at it, people say, well, it's a lot better than it used to be. And I understand that. I understand that it used to be downtown was awful and that we've made a lot of strides. But I think it's time to stop looking back at what we've done and start looking forward to where we need to go. If you compare us with communities like Athens, Georgia, Greenville, South Carolina, Oxford, Mississippi, and at the risk of sounding like a heretic, Auburn, Alabama, our town is not up to speed and up to where they are in terms of aesthetics, in terms of vibrancy, in terms of the number of businesses. Every, and, you know, we have beautiful craftsmen's homes downtown that are now student slums, and I don't know how that happened. I wasn't here when that happened, but I don't want to see that happening more in this city. I want to see it less. I looked, I looked at the Dina Washington Building, and that's a beautiful building. If you look at it, and you can just imagine what it could be. It could be a hotel. It could be condos. I look next door, and I see what appears to be a storage bin for copiers. It's a storefront, but it just has a bunch of old, big copiers sitting in there that they're just using to store. And across the street, there's like fast food waste in the windows of an abandoned business. So I really can't see how this is going to help that, and I think it's going to hurt it. The project as proposed by Sports Illustrated, in my opinion, is not the direction we need to move to harness Tuscaloosa's charm and beauty. It's an experiment by an organization that runs a confusing myriad of timeshares and hotels and Margaritavilles. I'm wondering if y'all are as confused as I am about the role as to what each organization will play. I know Wyndham will manage the property, but is Sports Illustrated just lending their name? I don't know. And Travel and Leisure, what role do they play? So I haven't had really good answers about the structure of their organization and their business plan. I'm also concerned about the introduction of timeshares and what that would mean to our community. Timeshares are notoriously problematic and have been for years from a legal and community perspective. I haven't seen an in-depth look at what this would mean and how it would change the complexion of our hospitality and tourism industry. Has there been any research or benchmarking or talk with similar communities who have timeshare experience? I do know that Wyndham, which acquired Travel and Leisure a few years ago, has a class-action lawsuit filed against it by its timeshare holders, and I wish you would look into it because some of it is pretty disturbing. Neither have I found the organization to be very transparent or helpful. They're extremely hard to get information from. Councilwoman Crowe, I know you, I asked you if they would send a list of properties they owned within a 500-mile radius of Tuscaloosa. They made a big deal about this at the presentation, and they just sent a list of cities. You know, they didn't send the direct properties. I would love to have gone and looked at some and checked out a few that may be similar to what they're going to build here. I know they also, I also asked for a PowerPoint presentation. They didn't get that to them either. So the direction they're taking, to me, is really unclear. I think there are too many questions that have been left unanswered. Their business structure is complex and opaque. The red flags are all there, and I ask you to pay attention to them. Don't take the chance that a piece of prime property could turn into another abandoned eyesore or drive other businesses into that state. It's time to put more thought into what our city should look like. The University of Alabama has done a beautiful job of implementing a vision of what it wants to look like and making sure their buildings look like that. The city of Tuscaloosa needs to do the same. We need to step back, develop a policy, decide what we want this town to look like, and put some teeth into our regulations that govern development. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address City Council? If you would, please give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Dominique Yancey. I live at 1302 Lexington Lane in Tuscaloosa. The proposed building design does not fulfill the pledge that Sports Illustrated made to the citizens, the community, and you, the City Council, in the October City Council meeting. At the October City Council meeting, Kit Wilburn, Vice President of Strategic Development, said that he's proud that they deliver a resort that, quote, "is specifically designed for each community and shows the attributes that make each community unique." He further said, and I quote, "We pledge to do the same thing here in Tuscaloosa." The architect with Johnson, Jackson, excuse me, Lamar Johnson Collaborative, said that their goal is to develop a resort that is its own identity and respectful to what's happening across the river at the university. That is not what they are presenting to you. In fact, Sports Illustrated in their media releases has said that their design for campus resorts is the design of industrial chic. I provided to you about seven pages, some of which I previously provided in the October hearing, and showing you some of the previous designs and showing that the proposed building is similar to the previous creations done by their architect or by Sports Illustrated itself. The design that they've submitted here is just another example of industrial chic to be similar to other designs by the architect and Sports Illustrated. In the materials that I provided here, photo A, as you see, was a, shows a proposed Sports Illustrated resort in Orlando. Photo B, which is provided, was a mixed-use residential by the architect, in this case, Lamar Jackson Collaborative, Johnson Collaborative. And photo C, excuse me, was a withdrawn proposal for a Sports Illustrated Resort and Conference Center for downtown Ann Arbor, Michigan. If you look at that design and C, and then you look at the proposed diagram, which is D that's been provided, which is the SI resort. I attended the April 3 meeting, thank you, Councilmember Crowe, at the Avenue Pub, and questions by and to the developer were, have you been downtown? Have you taken a look at campus? And one of the members of their team said that the inspiration for this project was the soup store. That is, you wonder, why would they say this, that it's the soup store? Because it fills in with the industrial chic look that they are going to be putting in these campus models. Furthermore, it's no surprise that, you know, they would think that the Alamoite is the most beautiful building recently that's been developed here in Tuscaloosa, when there's, it is attractive, but it fits in with the industrial chic look. Furthermore, in this particular case, Sports Illustrated has decided to come here. They've decided to come to the Crimson Tide. They've decided to come to Tuscaloosa and the University of Alabama. But if you look at their design, if you look at the colors that they have on top of their building with that design that looks like something out of the Golden Nugget, if you look at the entrance to the facility itself, what color is it? It's not crimson, it's not white, it's not Houndstooth, it's not bone, it's a form of orange. This fits in with what they want. A pencil has an eraser for a reason, and they can modify the colors, they can change the look of this, but what we're asking for is that they live up to the pledge and promise that they made to all of you. When a developer comes and makes a pledge and gives statements to you about the design and doesn't fulfill that pledge, you have the discretion and the ability, as our elected representatives of the people that speak for us, to hold them to that pledge. This design that they have submitted is not specifically designed for our community. All you have to do is look at their previous designs by the architect or by Sports Illustrated. This does not show the attributes that make our community unique. This resort is not its own unique identity. This is not respectful to what's happening across the river at the university. You have the right to hold them to the representations and presentations. This is another campus model of industrial chic that does not take into account who we are, the beauty of our buildings, anything southern about this is simply not there. If you cannot deny the project for a failure to live up to their design promises and pledges, then, at the very least, you should request conditions to this design. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address City Council tonight? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
My name is Tony Hubbard, 1507 River Road Drive on Tuscaloosa, 35406. And I spoke to the council back in, on Tuesday, October 15th, had same issues. I'm here primarily because I'm the president of the Homeowner Association for Rivermont. We're about a mile west of the proposed development. We've got 69 homes in our neighborhood, and I've had several neighbors and others ask me to speak on the traffic primarily issue. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the City Councilors for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank Norman because he offered two opportunities for us to meet with the developers where citizens could find out more about this. And also, I've said from the beginning, though, that Sane and Associates is a very reputable traffic engineering company. They represent the developers, and the city is not their client, and that's a concern I have. And so I urge the city to contract with other traffic engineering companies to get a second opinion. And I understand that City Engineer has had communications with another traffic engineering company, so before I go any further, I'd like to applaud the city for doing that. I think it's important that you have someone representing you to understand the traffic. It's a complicated issue, to say the least. First, most of the facts that I mentioned in the council meeting on October 15th of 2024 haven't changed. There's still over 100 or 1,100 households, 13 businesses, a nursing home, et cetera, within a mile of the proposed, or maybe a mile and a half at most, of the proposed development going west-west on Rice Mine Road, and a mile further on West, on Rice Mine Road are other businesses, and a middle school and an elementary school. The vast majority of these households, businesses, schools, et cetera, rely on Rice Mine Road as their only means of ingress and egress. It's one way in and one way out, and that's on to Rice Mine Road. Regarding the traffic... Regarding the traffic study, as I've said before, I'm not a traffic engineer. But I, I've read the traffic study as best I could, and I have the following issues. First, the scope, and I think the second opinion that you got echoed this, that the study did not even evaluate traffic effects for the vast majority of these households and businesses, as it only went a little over a quarter of a mile west on Rice Mine. So there are eleven hundred houses, all these businesses and other people who rely on Rice Mine Road, who have, that area has not been studied in the traffic study, to my knowledge. Second, obviously, the scope should have been much broader. Second, it appears to me that traffic counts used to evaluate the traffic were conducted on May sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, when the University of Alabama was not in session and consequently forty thousand students, or thereabouts, had left for the summer. I don't believe the data they're using is representative of the traffic for about ten-plus months of the year, and there's a big difference, as all of you know, between traffic in our city when the university is in session and when it's not. So let me read a couple of excerpts from the traffic study of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, except for study, let's see. Their conclusions are that each study intersection is currently operating at a level of service of D or better. D represents moderate delays, slight increase in traffic causing noticeable, or noticeable traffic delays are caused by increases in delays. Westbound Highlands Driveway at Rice Mine Loop Road during AM peak hours is also below D, it's an E or an F. Southbound East Service Road on Rice Mine during peak hours is also operating at E or F levels. In twenty, they're, looked at twenty twenty-seven. In twenty twenty-seven, they believe that the westbound Rice Mine Road, northeast US eighty-two McFarland Boulevard, is reduced to LOS or Level of Service of E in peak hours. Westbound Rice Mine Road is reduced to a Level of Service of F during PM peak hours. The future conditions after Sports Illustrated Resort is constructed, so they're looking at twenty twenty-seven, again, there are levels of service of E or F, particularly on westbound Rice Mine Road. So based on those excerpts, it's my opinion that current issues with Rice Mine, even with the recommendations from the study, I'm still, we're still going to have areas of problems. Finally, it's clear to me that the developers that discuss the future development with the traffic engineers and the City Council should be fully aware that the developers, if successful tonight, will be coming back with plans for Phase Two and possibly more. They have about thirty-nine contiguous acres. Based on my review of the site plan, the current proposal, they're only utilizing about eight to ten acres, and they would have plenty of room for future development for Phase Two, maybe Phase Three. And if you remember, their original proposal was for a hundred and thirty-seven hotel rooms, a hundred and fifty condominiums, and two hundred and fifty time shares in three retail buildings. So I say, don't kid ourselves. Approval tonight will set a precedence and open the door for additional development more in line with their original proposal. And for those reasons, I would urge the council to vote no on their proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Anyone else wish to address their City Council tonight? You would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Rod Price, one four two six three Legacy Lane, Legacy Circle, excuse me. I feel like the Lone Ranger. I am here to kind of reverse course there. I am for this project, and I think it has a lot of merit for this town. My interest in it was that we were the former owners of the Cypress. So I single-handedly fixed that traffic problem that Mr. Walker was talking about. We closed the Cypress and sold it, and it still remains that way. But when a project like this comes next door to you, you can better bet other people are looking at a project like Cypress as kids in the candy shop there. It will be something special soon, soon someday. Mr. President, the commissioners, mayor, and your staff, thank you for this because it's what it's, this town's about. As a developer, a local developer, I've stood before you before promoting other projects. I've stood before you opposing them. My interest in this project was that we were with the Cypress at one time, and I'm interested in all things riverfront. So I went to the meetings, and I have listened, and I have heard different than I think other people. I guess you can hear what you want to hear, but I asked more questions, too. I called these developers, several of them, and I've talked at length with a few on the phone, and I've got every answer, every question, to every answer that I've asked. And I'm impressed with this group. I ask you for your support tonight for this Sports Illustrated Resort. It's going to be a welcome destination for all residents of the city, obviously, even of those that don't think it's pretty or don't like the way it's going to be managed already. It will be a class resort. It's going to be a vibrant city center for the riverfront. If you think about what we've got now, we've got the marketing tools, the staff in this mayor's staff, the chamber staff, and we've got the most beautiful river that's the most underutilized property we have in town. This is what we need. It will significantly boost our economy. You've heard the numbers, but briefly, they're going to give you an estimated twenty-five million dollars back in tax revenue. They've got twelve hundred construction jobs coming. They've got a hundred and twenty permanent jobs, and to some people, it may not be a career job, but to some people it is. And we have a hospitality school here that that's the perfect job. And it ties them into a company that's world-class, like Sports Illustrated Resorts and Travel and Leisure. Plus, there are other seven or eight brands that I've learned they have. When we get this project finished, it should have about a hundred and fifty million dollars in, in investment in Tuscaloosa. There's not a lot of cities that wouldn't pull their arm off to get them to come to their town to invest a hundred and fifty million dollars with a resort like this. We should be thanking them for that gem that they're bringing us. And at the same time, you've heard, they're not asking for any tax abatement. It's off the table. Visitors to this resort will also do what we need the most. If you go out to eat today, you notice that restaurants are not full, hotels are not full, and it brings in people with revenue, staying longer terms and spending their money. We can make this project work here, and I think that we can trust them to do what they say rather than to throw accusations of what they're telling you is not true, or what they're telling you is not going to happen. This is what's going to happen when it's, 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 obviously, if you talk to them rather than point at them or talk at them, you learn something a little bit different. I think it's a class operation. They are going to enhance this community on the north side of this riverwalk. The new bridge ties north and south together. You've got Randall Park money invested already, and this will pick Randall Park in the north, and the new bridge bypass for pedestrians and bicycles all go through Sports Illustrated Resort. They've moved the riverwalk up to the riverfront. So that's something they're, they're going to help finish that side of the river for you. I hope that you will see it in your way to vote tonight. They're going to foster relationships with this community. They've told me there's strong corporate sponsors wherever they go. I have to believe it because I have no reason to not to. They engaged in dialogues with residents in these meetings that went on and on about some questions that are just hypothetical, but it looks like the traffic is manageable, whether it's in school or out of school. We all know, there's a morning rush, there's an afternoon rush, but we, overall, Tuscaloosa's not a traffic issue.
Mr. Price?
You're gone? I do hope that you'll see tonight to vote yes and support this, and I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Anyone else wish to address City Council tonight?
I'm Janet Crowder, and I live at thirteen oh six Overlook Road. I have hopscotched this river my whole life. I was born in Alberta City, lived there, moved across it, moved back. I've gone back and forth. So I'm a hometown girl. I consider this river everyone's river. I know we're talking about the neighborhoods, and we keep talking about people who live within a mile or traffic on Rice Mine, and all those are important to me. But if you're a part of this town, this river is, it's the fiber of our town. It runs through our town. It's our identity. I went to high school in Northport, so I was a river rat, probably had that name. And the only job I ever had was to teach in Tuscaloosa City Schools. This city and this river pulse in my veins, and I stand here to tell you, this is not what needs to happen on our river. And I say "our river" because it's every one of you on this river as part of your district. It is not my river because of where I currently live. I have followed this development through almost every meeting I knew about. It got through the first two committees before I knew, but once Norman Crowe was kind enough to include our district, I've been to these meetings, I've corresponded with you all in the best ways I know how, through emails, texts, to let you know how I feel about this. I think I'm as informed as you can be about this from an outsider, and I'm here to say it's the wrong development in the wrong place. It's said that good is the enemy of great. Have they made it a little better? They have. Is it sort of good? Yeah. Is it great? It's not great. It's not a great-looking development. The idea of time shares is not great. The idea of more hotel rooms is not great. It's not in a great place. It's simply not great, and I don't want to settle for something on the prime, centrally-located level spot left on our river. What goes there does not need to be good. What goes there needs to be great. That spot deserves something great, and the citizens of our town deserve something great. What's really there? Two high-rise blocks that benefit mainly transients, people who come into our town for a short amount of time. We, we depend on those people. They bring a lot of money and a lot of goodwill to our city, but we need something there that we use as Tuscaloosans on a regular basis. The traffic study is interesting. It's only under the canopy. That doesn't count the people coming from the other direction, and that's a huge part of the flow. It also doesn't count the intersection. The real problem occurs when Rice Mine Road and Watermelon come together, and we try to all converge and get out onto McFarland. This is not even taking that into account if the markers are where they said they are. That traffic is, that intersection in that area is rated a D by the state of Alabama. We are taking a D intersection, throwing a major development on it. And if my calculations are right, if they get to their ultimate six buildings, that throws nine hundred and ninety more cars at least into that intersection each day with very little change. I don't like what they're bringing, and I'm certainly not sure about who they are. It's been said that they're a gem, but the only town or the only area that's been receptive to this gem so far is the Dominican Republic. They have not successfully landed a Sports Illustrated in another college town or another city within the United States, to my knowledge, and I watch the news daily because I keep hearing they're going to open in this town, this town, this town. It's yet to happen. We don't have to be the first. We don't have to be the guinea pig. If they're going to be good and successful, let them be out, get out there, do that, and come back to us. It's also said that they're going to be a great employer, and maybe that is true. But when it comes to employment and consumer-related issues and safety, since the year, since the year two thousand, they have accumulated over twenty-two million dollars in fines, according to Violation Tracker, which is a very reputable source. So you need to look carefully at the agency you're bringing into our town. If you think they're a great employer, bringing good jobs and going to do a good job, this might say different if you take time to look at it. I'm very concerned about the entertainment district that's coming. When I look at entertainment, I was extremely offended at the latest Sports Illustrated fashion show that was put in. They hired a young woman just out of college to perform on a stage, something that was extremely offensive to me, and I think most of you would find it offensive, too. That is not what I want to see here, and we know, they say they'll be family-oriented. There are no guarantees. I found the fun fact this past few weeks that this river dates its origins to three hundred million years ago. If we are going to develop something on a site that old and precious, let's make it great, not just good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the City Council? Since we are now at six oh three, we will begin three minutes per person. So anyone else wish to address City Council? Please give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Barclay Garrett, twenty-two twenty-two Ninth Street. Good evening, Mayor Maddox, Council, Council President Tyner, and council members. I have the pleasure of representing the Chamber of Commerce of West Alabama. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. Our, our chamber president, Kyle South, sends his regrets. He had planned to be here, but unfortunately got called away to another meeting. So at the chamber, we are committed to fostering a vibrant and prosperous business environment throughout our region. We believe that thoughtful development plays a crucial role in enhancing the quality of life for our residents and ensuring long-term economic viability for our region. Over the years, our community has consistently expressed support for initiatives that responsibly develop our riverfront areas. From the Riverfront Advisory Commission's public hearings to frameworks emphasis on mixed-use riverfront corridors, Tuscaloosa residents have voiced support for projects that bring new amenities and foot traffic to our waterfront. These efforts have been backed by substantial public and private investments. These investments reflect a broad consensus that responsible, well-planned riverfront development not only enhances quality of life, but also stimulates local business growth. As an organization, the chamber stands staunchly pro-business. We do not advocate for any single project, but we do encourage your consideration of how strategic investments can strengthen our local and regional economy. By advancing development that is in harmony with existing riverfront plans, the city can continue building momentum around waterfront, waterfront revitalization. It's noteworthy when developers choose to invest in our city without seeking public incentives. Such decisions reflect confidence in Tuscaloosa's potential and underscore the viability of the concept without reliance on public subsidies. In closing, as you deliberate about this or any other development opportunity, we urge the council to weigh the demonstrated benefits of the development, the job creation, expanded hospitality offerings, and enhanced tourism, as well as the community's enduring commitment to the vibrant, vibrant riverfront. Again, while the chamber refrains from endorsing any particular project outright, we remain steadfast in our belief that prudent, market-driven development promotes the long-term health of our business community and the well-being of Tuscaloosa and West Alabama. Thank you for your dedication to our city's progress and for the thoughtful consideration of the perspectives of all stakeholders involved.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address City Council tonight? You would, please give your name and address.
Yes, lady and gentleman of the council, my name is Clark Summerford. My wife, Alice, and I reside at five three five North Shore Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. When I leave, I, I drive out on, on Rice Mine Road. I just want to follow up a little bit about the traffic studies that Tony, Tony covered also. We talked to Mr. Gardner, your city engineer, and, and let me say, at this juncture, we found Mr. Gardner to be very helpful, very professional. I talked to him on the phone. I haven't met him, but he's a good, in our opinion, a very good representative of the employees of the city. But we, we talked to him and asked if he would send the developers' traffic study out to, to an independent firm to look at it and, and evaluate it. And he did, and we're so glad that he did because the independent engineering firm, Skipper Engineering, found two major flaws in, in the Sane report. One was that the, as Tony mentioned, the, the traffic count was taken, I think, May fourteen or May fifteen of twenty twenty-four, and the university was out. Now, I heard somebody say different, but in my opinion, there is a difference between Now, I heard somebody say different, but in my opinion, there is a difference between the traffic in this city, depending on whether the university is in or the university's out. So if you take your traffic count when the university's out, then your data is not good. It's not representative of nine to 10 months of the year. Second flaw that Skipper, the independent people, found was the scope of the study area. The developer's firm went from the development just about a half a mile down Rice Mine Road. But Skipper found that 26% of the traffic is coming from the west. So you're... You know, if you limit your scope and take the count when all these students are not here, then you're not getting good data that you, the council, could rely upon in deciding whether or not this development is going to be horrendous for traffic or if it's going to be reasonable for traffic. You don't have that information, in our opinion. Another thing, and this is something that was puzzling.
If you can wrap up in 30 seconds, how about that?
Okay. The Sane study assumes Phase 1, but it also assumes that there's going to be a Phase 2. Now, that means the developers have talked to the engineers and told them they have a use for Phase 2 and have described that land use. That would be the only way that the engineers could develop a traffic count. But we have been told repeatedly, and I'm sure Councilman Crowe remembers this, we've been told that they have no plans for development in Phase 2. Well, that was said in April, but this traffic study report was in March. And in March, apparently, they were telling the engineers at Sane that they had a use for Phase 2. So apparently, they're just assuming that they're going to get your vote tonight and pass this in their favor, and now they have already have discussed a future development.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the additional time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address city council tonight?
Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. Bobby Bragg, 706 Indian Hills Drive. I'm probably one of the closest homeowners to the potential project. Couple of points, I guess, I want to throw out for clarification. The two pieces of property have about $35 million, have been traded the last couple of years multiple times. There's $35 million of investment in those two properties. Something is going on those properties in the near future. I think, you know, we can discuss, and frankly, we have discussed for the last year, multiple iterations of things. I think they've done a pretty good job of addressing the concerns related to beauty. Beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I can drive through my neighborhood, which is a beautiful neighborhood. I don't love every house. Don't love every house. I don't tell my neighbors they should paint their house. That's just... You're going to invest $150 million in our town? You get the right to make the final call on what it looks like. You know, $150 million investment with zero tax incentives is a great deal for the city. It's going to spur development on the river. We need to be aware of the plot next to it is going to be developed, whether it's these guys or someone else. It's going to be developed. The land across the way is going to be developed. We've got to do those things wisely, but at the end of the day, when you put your $35 million into the land and you add another $120 million into the property, it's your call. It's a great deal for the city, no tax dollars. I'd strongly suggest you vote yes.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address city council? If you would, please come forward with your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Shaw. I'm at 31023rd Street in Tuscaloosa. I am a graduate student at the University of Alabama, a current campus member, and kind of I'm not super familiar with all of the details of the plans here. Haven't been able to find the detailed plans in my internet searches, but my one note so far, I agree about the traffic consideration. I would want to know especially residents or people at that... The proposed development would most likely be leaving and going out to McFarland, not turning left to go onto Rice Mine Road. So I'd want to note that in the traffic study. I'm also a cyclist, and I commute to campus, and I really like the connection of this proposed development to the Riverwalk and connecting it across the river to campus. I would like to know if there will be bicycle parking included in the plans. That's something that, if you're a cyclist, you need to find a place to park your bike. Also, I am an avid birder and a wildlife biologist, and one of the things lately that has been growing in concern is the collisions of birds with windows. I was not able... Or I did not see the kind of riverside of the plans, but if there are large windows there, I would want to know if they were planning on putting any window-safe film. It's something that is really easy to do. You can apply a nice film on the outside. You can make it a custom design. UAB, for example, in Birmingham, is doing a lot of great work, creating these really pretty and effective designs on their windows. There are a billion birds estimated that die each year running into windows, just in the United States. And trying to, you know, make sure that Tuscaloosa is promoting the bird biodiversity, which Tuscaloosa County is among the top counties in Alabama for bird biodiversity. So I want to try and protect birds. So I would urge the council to take a look at these concerns before approving the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address city council tonight? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. At this point, we are going to take a 10-minute recess. Before you stand up, we'll have to have a vote of the council to do that. Following the recess, we will come back, and the council will have the opportunity to ask any questions of staff or the applicant. Following that, then the council will vote. So do hear a motion for a 10-minute recess.
Second.
Moved in second for a 10-minute recess. Voting, Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Council is now in recess until 6:28. Move in second for reconvene, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 The City Council is now reconvene. This is an opportunity for the City Council to ask any questions of our team members or the petitioner. Any questions by the City Council? Seeing none, any comments by the City Council, or call vote?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, I just want to make a comment that about a year ago, we began the process of potentially approving this development. After three community meetings, the public's concerns were presented to the developer, and I believe the development today is better because of public input from constituents and the cooperation of the developer, and I want to say that thank you to all of you. Although there have been several changes to the proposed development, I still have several concerns on this and am unable to support this as presented. I believe a better plan can be developed with more time and input on this important property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Are you finished?
Yes. Thank you. I want to say something too. First of all, I want to say something about Norman, Counselor, Counselor Crowe. I've talked to him almost every single day for the last year, and he has really has gone, I think, above and beyond almost any councilman that I've ever worked with, and I've been down here, you know, twenty-eight years, but he has been so concerned, and I always ask him about him, you think I've done everything I can do, and he's had all these meetings and all, and I, for one, really appreciate the amount of time and hard work he's put into this. To the people, I want to say this, I have, there's one comment that, look, I'm a big boy, and there's one comment on Facebook saying, you know, you are gonna be just like Northport, you're not even gonna listen to the people. I hope that people, regardless of how this comes out, because I have not done any polling, polling, don't feel that way, because of however it comes out, because I have met, I have acknowledged every single, this is just me, I've acknowledged every single email, every single text, I've met with everybody who's asked to meet with me. And Mr. Hubbard, and Sally Reel, I had a great meeting with them Friday, and, you know, I just think it's very important to meet with all of the people in Tuscaloosa, not just if it affects your district. So, again, I thank you for your passion, I thank you, you know, for showing up tonight, I thank you for your calls, and I thank you for meeting with me, because I learned a lot too. I also met with those who were in favor of this, of the development too, as well as, I haven't had a meeting with the developers since months, I guess, after their last meeting at Indian Hills, but, again, I was glad to be able to support Councilman Crowe at all these meetings, at least the ones that I was able to attend. But just please know that, again, I do not know where the vote's gonna start, or who's gonna vote for what, I have kind of idea, but I just hope you know that, however it goes, it's much, it's much like the tax referendum on the schools, you know, I supported that greatly, had a lot of people got very angry, upset with me that I supported it, I had others that were very happy that I did, so it's, I think Ms. Nasser just said to me, I don't envy your job, but, you know, I love what I do. I love government, I love, you know, you're, again, you stay around long enough, you're gonna make a lot of people happy, you're gonna make a lot of people unhappy, but however this goes tonight, please know that your voice has been heard, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Tyner. Any other council comments before I begin a vote?
Yes, Mayor. Also, I want to piggyback on what Councilman Tyner said, I want to commend Councilman Crowe and his leadership. He's done what great leaders do. He's listened, he's advocated for his people, he's lost sleep, we've, again, we've talked almost every day about it, his concerns, so I want to commend Councilor Crowe and his leadership in this effort. At the end of the day, we are one Tuscaloosa, and there are pros and cons to this, and I think we gotta look at Tuscaloosa as a holistic approach, and at the end of the day, no matter how this vote turns out, I think it's important that we come together to the community and do what's best for the City of Tuscaloosa.
Thank you, Mr. Edman. Any other comments? So I will begin a vote on directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the development plan for 105 Rice Mine Road North, a riverfront zoning district development. That is what the council will be voting on. Is everyone clear on?
Again, you faded, I couldn't quite hear all of it.
The resolution that's before you is directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the development plan for 105 Rice Mine Road North, a riverfront zoning district development. If the council wanted to entertain that, we will begin the vote. If you want to otherwise have a substitute that we talked about at pre-council, now would be the time to entertain a substitute.
But the vote, as it is moving forward, is to allow, as presented, the development?
Yes, sir. It would direct the city attorney.
Direct the city attorney, okay, understand.
Okay. So with that understood, beginning the vote with Mr. Edman.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, I have five-two to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the development plan of 105 Rice Mine Road North. I'll pause for a second, I know we have many people here who would probably, they're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but we know this might be a good time to depart, so we'll just pause for a minute and allow everyone who would like to leave. You're ready, move again.
All right.
Okay. Resolution, ordinances, nod of a general nature or permanent operation, clerk?
This will approve a 240 special event nonprofit tax exempt license for the Kentuck Art Center Festival.
Move adoption.
Move in second, Mr. Mills.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, this is ABC alcohol application 25-034 for the Kentuck Museum Association Incorporated, applying for a 240 special nonprofit tax exempt license located at Kentuck Arts Center Festival, 1901 Jack Warner Parkway. This is an area view of the location. All my reports have been filed in the city clerk office, Officer Champion will give this report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Officer Champion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Police Department doesn't have any objections to this application.
Okay. Voting Mr. Lanier. Oh, I'm sorry, we need the applicant to come forward. Is the applicant here? The applicant left? When is this?
It's June sixth. Is that what it's at?
Yeah, Friday.
You can't do that.
Mr. Mills, what do we know about the applicant?
So with this application, again, this is an application, this license is passed down by the state, this is basically a notification that the city know that this event will take place, whether we vote yes or no for it. This is one of the events that the Kentuck Arts Center Festival has been doing, this is actually their third event they've put on this year.
Sorry, Anthony, I'm, we can't do this.
I'm sorry. Again, like I was saying before, this application, this type of license, has been approved by the state, is mainly for nonprofits around the state. This event, they actually already have been approved, whether the city votes yes or no for it, this is basically a notification for the city that the event's going on.
It's already been approved, whether we vote yes or no?
Yes, sir. Just as a notification purposes for the city.
Okay. Voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, whether it matters or not. Clerk?
This will authorize a cost and scope change order to the construction contract with Mac Environmental LLC.
Move adoption.
Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize the chief financial officer to draw drafts for the Northern Sewer Expansion Project, Phase One Property Acquisitions.
Motion.
Second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize the chief financial officer to draw drafts for the University Boulevard East Improvements Project Property Acquisition.
Offered adoption.
Second. Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes amendment number one to the professional services contract between the City of Tuscaloosa and Chernobyl Engineering LLC.
Second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Brian's Flooring and Design.
Move adoption.
Second. Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with T and P Construction.
Move, second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Chip Griffith Construction Incorporated.
Motion.
Second. Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a funding agreement with the Tuscaloosa County Park and Recreation Authority.
Motion.
Second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Ordnances, resolution of a general nature or permanent operation for introduction, clerk?
This introduces zoning amendment number twelve.
Move adoption.
Second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 We're voting on the introduction.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Clerk?
This introduces zoning amendment number thirteen.
Move adoption.
Second. Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Clerk?
This introduces zoning amendment number fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Clerk?
This adds section 21-228 to the Code of Tuscaloosa.
Call for the adoption.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Off unanimous consent.
Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Code is amended, clerk?
This will amend various sections of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
Second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Off unanimous.
Second. Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Code's amended, clerk?
This authorizes amendment twelve to the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget.
Move adoption.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Off unanimous consent.
Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Budget's amended, for adoption, clerk?
This sets July first as the date to consider adoption of zoning amendment twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Date is set, clerk?
This sets July first as the date to consider adoption of zoning amendment thirteen.
So moved. Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Date is set, clerk?
This sets July first as the date to consider adoption of zoning amendment number fourteen.
Motion.
Second. Move in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Date is set, ordering accounts.
This authorizes the payment of bills.
Paying bills.
Paying my bills.
Move in second, voting Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Bills are paid. Citizens' comments and other communications, any citizens wish to address their seat council Seeing none, subject to exercise of mayor veto and ordinances of general nature or permanent operation, all applicable departments here by otherwise implementing council policy disdaining active.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Move in second to adjourn, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes.